Okay, folks. Welcome to the special meeting of the council. The date is March 24th, Monday, 2025, time is 12:05. With that, I'll call a meeting order. Before we commence the meeting, I'd just like to say that we are, we have about an hour to an hour and a half. So we're going to try to move through our agenda quite quickly. I'd just like to explain how we came to be at this meeting today and to address several issues of serious concern to the village and the residents. Today's meeting is a continuation of the Tuesday, March 18th, 2025 regular council meeting. This meeting consisted of both an open portion from 6 till 8 and a closed portion consisting of the community charter, which began at 8:00 PM. This closed session was requested by the Ministry of Housing as the list of successful applicants has been, or have been embargoed, that is, to be kept in confidence. Until the ministry announced the successful applicants in the ministry news release. Other matters consist with the community charter requirements for closed meeting were also in discussion. There were two very serious motions before us and debate had not yet begun on either by 10:30 when the unanimous approval of council was required to continue the meeting. Matters of such importance to the village should not be taken in a frantic and haphazard way, but requires a careful decision-making on the part of council. Which brings us to today. The first council could achieve a quorum and in fact ensure that all council was available to discuss this very important matter and allow time for councillors to ask questions and become fully informed prior to making a decision, as is their responsibility. Today we'll address two resolutions. The first, to vote and receive a $3.9 million grant, which should be 100% funding for water metering in Lions Bay. The second motion commits the village to a performance contract, which council received Monday, March 17. The receipt of the funds is contingent on the village commitment to both motions. I could not support debating this serious matter after 10:30 on Tuesday, March 18. This was first available, this was the first available time for council to reconvene the meeting to discuss the matter due to both personal and compassionate commitments on the part of council members. Appropriately, no decision was made on Tuesday, the 18th. I expect decisions will be made today after debate and questions have occurred. This meeting was originally scheduled for 6:00 PM. CAO asked that I could reschedule to 12 noon to minimize staff overtime, hence the 12:00 PM start. So with that, we'll move to public participation. I'd just like to remind the public, council shall hold a 10-minute public participation period or until speakers have concluded whichever comes first. At the beginning of each council meeting, members of the public shall address their questions through the chair, who shall answer if possible, or refer to another council member or staff to answer or subsequent research. Each address must be limited to two minutes. All persons addressing council are expected to adhere to the public guidelines, which are appended to this byline. So with that.
You haven't adopted the agenda yet.
Okay.
Move adoption of the agenda.
The adoption of the agenda.
Second.
Second. Any amendments?
None.
All in favor?
Yes.
Motion carry. Okay, we'll move to the gallery first, then we'll go online. Have your name on the sheet.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm here today to request that council not make an unforced error by declining the 100% $4 million water metering grant. It's unfortunate, a well-thought-out information campaign, together, together with community engagement, did not precede the opportunity coming to fruition. Today, make the right decision to accept the significant and strategic infrastructure gift and begin informing the public and engaging with them soon. Thank you for your turn.
Thank you. Anyone else in the gallery?
Marek Schretzky, if I may.
Marek, we're just having people in the gallery here in person speak first, then we'll go online if time permits. Thank you.
Thank you.
Please announce your name and scratch it down on the sheet. Thank you.
Good afternoon, mayor and council. My name is Scott. I live at 1150 B Road. For the record, I was a councillor from 2011 to 2014 and chaired the first infrastructure committee. We commissioned the first infrastructure master plan, which is help guiding the village. I have read all of the public information that is available and I support the village's proposal for the BC Water Metering Program Pilot Program and can't emphasize enough the importance of council formally accepting the provincial funding grant. This is vital for the viability of the municipality and will save homeowners at least 7,500 in today's dollars in tax assessments in the future, not to mention all of the additional benefits. Help public work finally. Daytime labor and water. 100% funding, no cost to the village except management of the project. Upgrades to the watering system by adding 10 water main zone meters, 11 remote control pressure management installations. Higher levels of government will mandate all communities monitor water consumption in the not so future. Municipalities like Annmore, Burnaby, West Vancouver already have water metering, which homeowners pay for. Water metering will not make homeowners pay more for water unless council decides in the future. It is only a measuring device, which might solve why we use three times the average in Metro Vancouver. If council decides, then those who need more water will pay more water, but that's only council's decision. The only reason I have heard to not be doing is for people who don't know the facts and the benefits and it's fear that is influencing the resistance. For these reasons, I strongly urge council to formally accept the $3.94 million proposal to the BC watering, water metering pilot program. Thank you.
Anyone else in the gallery?
Good afternoon, council mayor. I understand the question is allowed. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes, so my question is fairly simple. Can I have some understanding what are the objections of council or mayor who do not want this grant?
I can answer first. There has been no decisions made. There was no objections, but there was certainly a request for a debate.
Okay. Anybody else want to weigh in on that?
Yeah, I think more and more we told in a bit when we started discussing it, I personally have no objections to them, there's strong references.
Thanks.
Yeah, I have no objections. I think that the debate is required, it's a $4 million commitment and I believe it requires discussion and we haven't had time to do that. And which, and I'll give some background actually further in, it'll come up in the discussion. So I think that'll answer your question. Thank you for your question.
And I'll just weigh in that I have no objection to this grant proposal as well. Thank you, Ingrid.
Anyone else in the gallery before we go online?
Marek Schretzky, if I may know.
Sorry, Marek. We're going to the gallery here in person and then we're going to come online and I apologize. I know you've been biting at the bit here. Just hold on for another two minutes. Thank you.
I have the same key question that Ingrid had. I can't think of a valid reason to turn down this grant. We are constantly faced with extreme water shortages in this village. Every tool we have at our disposal to monitor our water usage in this village, to allow us to understand where the consumption lies and how to mitigate any overconsumption in the village. I think it's extremely important that we get these things put in place. So I really implore you guys to move forward with accepting this grant.
Okay, thank you. Marek, over to you.
Thank you. First, I wish to speak to those councillors who have delayed the process of new projects for the last two years. All the villagers I know don't understand the purpose it serves because it certainly does not benefit the village. Second, I wish to request the current project to be started and substantially progressed before we looking into a new water metering project. This village cannot handle five projects at the same time. We're just tiny. On the subject of water metering, I would like you to remember that we have more water available in this village than we can ever use, except six summer months, six summer weeks, sorry. The shortage was already overcome with the recent development of additional sources. We should drill for water and have source of drinkable water for emergencies like the forest fire. As a mechanical engineer, I understand the advantage of water metering to define water leaks. However, this tool should not be used for policing. Any change in our methods of charging for water will only increase the cost of service in total. Our village was always appreciated for free and independent living. Let's stop turning into a police state. This nearly $4 million project requires public scrutiny. Thank you for your consideration.
Okay, next speaker.
That would be Norma Rogers.
Okay, Norma, you're on.
So what a great opportunity for Lions Bay to receive $4 million fully funded water metering. Positive for water conservation, future grant opportunities and village finances, since we would eventually have to pay for it ourselves. I read through the report and see no downside. Good report and good work, Carl. I don't understand why council did not approve this funded project unanimously in the March 18th closed session. I mean, really? This is a win for the village. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll just comment that I said at the beginning, council did not debate this or call a question on Tuesday. We ran out of time. Okay.
So okay, we did debate it. We didn't get to call the questions.
We still had further debate as well.
Yeah, but we did get to.
And we had further debate, did we not?
Yeah, we didn't get to the question yet.
So we have one more person online.
Norm?
Hello, thanks. Thanks, thanks council for the opportunity to speak. First, I'd like to thank Public Works Manager Carl and staff for winning this grant opportunity for us. It's fantastic, great work. It certainly isn't lost on the community, so thank you very much. I wanted to just emphasize that Lions Bay is, it's a smart, we're a smart community, we're a smart group of people and we understand that data is a very powerful tool. This provincial metering program is a data collection exercise first and foremost, and it'll have very impactful benefits to the community. You know, understanding exactly what our water system is doing gives us the ability to implement cost-effective improvements, do repairs quickly, efficiently, and in real time, which is critical. So it's a, it's a very good asset management tool. Water metering also provides data. We need to support public works. It helps individuals understand their use patterns and how they can help conserve water during droughts. So it's also a very good resource management tool. The data puts us in a much stronger position to compete for future infrastructure enhancement grants because we'd have evidence to demonstrate need and a commitment to good asset and resource management. So it's a smart thing to do. It'll make us far more competitive. You know, grants are a competition. Municipalities line up to get this money and if we have strong data, we can demonstrate good asset and resource management practices. We're in a much better space to compete for future grants, so it opens up opportunities. You know, we all pay federal and provincial income tax and I would certainly like to see that money invested back into our communities through grant programs exactly like this one. So I would certainly encourage council to vote and support this improvement opportunity. So I think we have a really good opportunity in front of us. I hope, I hope we can all recognize that. It's also, you know, key to understand that this initiative is supported by the infrastructure committee, group of smart people. It's some more supported by the climate action committee and again, another group of smart volunteers and residents. So I want to thank you for your time and I certainly hope we go in the right, right direction here.
Thank you, Norm. Okay, next speaker. We'll just go with, how many do you have online? All right, good. Well, thank you very much. We'll go one more and then we're almost at 15 minutes, so let's.
Yeah, yeah, thank you very much. My name's Jan Schneider. I would like to voice my opposition to receiving the grant. I see the grant as a Trojan horse to introduce high-density housing to Lions Bay. The data used by the province will be used to support the province's initiatives promoting high-density housing. Currently, we can reject the province's imposed high-density housing due to water concerns. Water meeting would, water metering would change the argument of lack of water to let the market decide. Mean that villagers, villagers would have to buy water at prices supported with the introduction of new homes and higher density. Thank you for your consideration. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jan. All right, we'll move to item number eight, the DC watering pilot project grant. And with that, the recommendation is the council directs the CAO to execute the Ministry of Housing and Municipal Affairs Contribution Agreement before, before it's noon, March 25th, 2025 deadline. Do I have a motion for it?
So much.
Okay, you have a second. Okay, moved by councillor Broden, second by councillor Abbott. Discussion, councillor Broden.
I'd like to point out that there's actually two motions here. The first motion is a motion which, which enables us to receive the funds and the second motion commits the, the community to a certain performance level. And I'm totally in support of actually both motions, but I, but I would like to note that we are committing something. This is not free, unconditional funds and, and that we need to be cognizant of any risks that we might be taking on and fully, and, and you know, moving in, in a very responsible way. As one of four on council committing this village to deliver a $4 million project in a very unstable economic and political period, it's my fiduciary and legal responsibility to ask questions on behalf of all residents of Lions Bay. And I believe that residents trust that I would, will do that. I'd like to just look at the term fiduciary. Fiduciary is someone who manages money or property for someone else. When you're named a fiduciary and accept the role, you must by law manage the person's money and property for their benefit. And so I think, you know, count, we have currently have four members on council who are responsible to really take a serious look, no matter, regardless of how positive something appears. And in fact, I believe is, I believe that we must take the time that it takes to, to review this. I would like to join many others who have thanked Carl for his outstanding work in securing this, this grant and I think Lions Bay is an outstanding place for it to be applied because we are an excellent community to pilot things. And this is, this is a pilot and there's certain conditions involved in that. Also like to thank the residents, the input from the residents has been substantial and fulsome and really appreciated. And I will be referring to a number of them in the second part of the discussion. Likely, there's no question as to if we are going to proceed with this grant or that would be my, my vision. But I think we should take the opportunity to examine how we proceed and I think that that is very, the only responsible thing to do. And we need to look at are there guardrails that are required as we move forward? How can we ensure that, that there are no overruns since we are committed to, to performance and outcome? And personally, my belief is, is that we have the guardrails in place. But however, I feel it's critical that we, that we raise that as part of the discussion and assure the community that we have in fact considered those guardrails.
Okay.
So with that, I would support this motion.
Okay. Any other councillors?
I'll just briefly say a couple of things. Just first of all, point out that yes, we did have a fairly robust discussion on this in the last meeting. We did not conclude it and did not call the question. So I'm not going to repeat anything that was said in that meeting for the benefit of residents. The councillors know my opinion and what we discussed in that meeting and I guess that's really the audience here today. I'll touch on one thing that was said. I think Scott, you mentioned, I think I heard you correctly. You said there's no cost to the village other than managing of the project. That is not actually true. There's no cost to managing the project. The grant includes a project management budget, which we can use. So actually, there's no costs that we can foresee. And then one other thing that we didn't, didn't come up on Tuesday night because we hadn't been made aware of it at the time, but I just want to point that to the other councillors. In the subsequent correspondence we got from the province, they made one very telling statement for me. They told us that to get water grants, we need to ensure that we have done all we can to take care of demand. There was, they didn't directly say what that looked like, but it was in reference to this water metering. It would be very difficult to convince the province, we've done everything we can to take care of demand. If we turn down a $4 million grant that's targeted at understanding our demand. And in fact, I think we could turn that into a positive. The other thing that the workshop manager very smartly added into this grant is zone metering. Now with zone metering as well as residential metering, you know exactly where the water is leaking. And if the water is leaking in our infrastructure system or in residents, we can turn that around into positive and say to the province, you told us and we have now proven and it's in our pipes and we can afford it. What do you want to do? And put them on, on the hook for giving us a grant. So for me, that, that was the final, the final deciding factor. I'm 100% behind us.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Cutler, anything bad?
Yeah, there's not really much more to say. I was in favor of this on Tuesday and I'm as in favor and more so after the outpouring of residents' support that we received over the weekend. So thank you, Carl, and to staff. And I look very forward to getting this project moving ahead and again, to kind of double down on councillor Abbott's comments that this, the acceptance of this grant is crucial to consideration of any other water-related grants in the future. So without acceptance of this and deliverance, we would be in a very precarious situation, more so than we are already. So 100% behind this initiative.
Okay, thank you for that. Okay, and just to add to this, I think to explain to the public in more, in more detail and leverage up what councillor Broden also talked about. We have to look at this in the broader context of, of the projects that have been approved and still remain to be approved. And in our due diligence, we reached out to the District of North Van, who also suffered, suffered a tragedy much like the Tannen Creek. And their feedback was they put all capital projects on hold for two years. Because that tragedy as, is, as we're experiencing now, we're under the local state emergency, does take a huge commitment from our community. That being said, we also have the beach park, which has been long awaited and we have really struggled to get that over the finish line. So that's another item. We have the pathways and jetty, which are important. And we had a task force that recommended that we move forward on some of these. We have a translink correspondence in the last three days where they've given us an exemption and now allow us to spend the entire translink funding on pathways in the village. So that's extremely positive. And then we also have hazardous trees, which we've been looking at. We have drill testing and geothermal, which could affect this building that we're in right today. And as I think councillor Abbott perhaps, or one of the other members talked about the risk of forest fire. We need to identify an alternate water source and that was also identified by John Rock, who's part of the Climate Action Committee. We have grants available to us and we have an opportunity where we can search out these alternative water sources in the unfortunate event if we were to have a forest fire. So there's a number of areas. This comes back to the work plan and strategic plan. Council has had a difficult time getting together to talk about the strategic plan. In fact, there's a workbook, workbook that's been requested by our CAO, which has not been followed up by all councillors. So as a council, we have to look at the broader scope, due diligence, as I mentioned. We, we reached out to the District of North Vancouver. We also talked to Aiden today, this morning, about his experience with, with Burnaby and water meters and his recommendations. We also reached out to the Annmore Mayor and the West Vancouver Mayor and this all happened after that Tuesday meeting. So with the exception of the District of North Vancouver. So with that being said, I am not opposed. I think that we have to come up with a solution to solve our leaks in our systems and those leaks are both on the private side, also on the public side. In addition, when we start this metering program, there's 40 to 50 homes which are not conforming and there will be situations that may arise into legal disputes. And we'll have to look at our bylaws and shore them up before we start to address those particular homes. So there's a number of areas that we have to look at in addition to just approving this on very short notice. So with that, I'll call a question. All in favor?
Yes.
Opposed?
Yes.
Motion carry. Okay, the next.
I think her, her response was delayed.
I, I took it as a yeah.
Yeah.
That's correct, yes.
Okay, the next motion would be that council commits the municipality to deliver the proposed project by 31st of March, 2027 and to participate in the ongoing pilot project.
Mayor, could I inter, interrupt? Based on, on the reading of the various information that's been provided, I'm, I'm wondering if I could propose an additional motion. The study does not preclude the other, other motion we're talking about, but the fact that one of the, one of, in, in reviewing the proposal, the metering equipment for the residential side currently is being proposed to be provided by US provider. And during this, the, the current tariff war and, and so on, I really wanted to look very carefully at what the impact might be on the grant. And so looking at the, the provision of, it appears at about $650,000.
Councillor Broden, I'm going to ask you for the motion.
Okay, thank you.
So you have a motion.
Point of order. So we have a motion on the table. Is this meant to be an amendment or overriding motion?
No, I was, I was attempting to place this motion ahead of the motion that was being, to be put on the.
We have one on the table already, so the question's been called.
Okay, we've got a, do we have a mover for the second motion? Then we'll come back to councillor Broden. There's a motion, the second motion is on table. Do we have a mover for that second motion?
Yes.
Okay, councillor Abbott moves it second.
Second.
Okay, councillor Cutler seconded debate.
I'm sorry, which motion are we on now?
We are on the motion that council commits the municipality to deliver the proposed project by the 31st of March, 2027 and to participate in the ongoing pilot project. And before I call a question, any hands for debate? Councillor Broden.
Okay, thank you. The motion that I was going to put forward was, was as a result of a review of the various, of the information provided to council on March 11th and updated on March 13th, updated again March 17th and, and provided to us at the March 18th meeting. And that, that is that because six, at least from my take, about $650,000 of the. of the materials involved are American sourced, that I will be seeking a motion after this motion to restrict the use of of American equipment on on this project. So that's that that's a separate item at this point, but that's just the history to why I was wanting to do this ahead of the other. There are two motions. We passed the first motion. The second motion is required in order to to obviously to obtain the funds. And I think it's, again, as I said, with my of my fiduciary responsibility is to make sure that we have considered anything that might might impact this. So certainly, I I think it it's it's an appropriate time to to ask some questions. Whether we get the answers to them today is is not, it's not going to happen presumably. But but I would like to ensure that we have that 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 there's an awareness that these have been considered and that will be looked at in the future, similar to the the tariff implications. And so, you know, some of the things that that come to mind are are how is our procurement policy operating? And and how is how might this impact this? Uh, will metering discourage any fire smart practices has been raised? How does this impact families per se? Uh, how does this impact secondary suites or secondary residences? Is there an impact on? It's a question. It's not. It's not a an objection in any way. How does this encourage housing? How does this supply? How does this support? Or how, what are the implications to empty homes and the current encouragement to have those those homes used? Clearly, we're moving towards mandatory metering and it makes perfect sense to take advantage of this project at this point. But it also makes, uh, it's also an important time to look at how we're going to implement this. This is one of 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 a three pronged approach, really. We need to, we we can, if we're metering water going into homes, that's very, very important as as one aspect. However, we have to ensure that we have water to supply to the homes to meter. And so we need to be looking at alternate sources as as we as we proceed with climate climate change. And so we need to continue to actively seek other water sources. Look at other me, other issues that may we may have with our infrastructure and make sure that none of that those are not lost. I'm not diminishing the importance of this project in any way. But I'm very concerned that we ensure that we keep full focus on all aspects. And this this has been was highlighted in some of the letters that we received from residents. They're concerned that there may be, that it may become a focus and assumed to be a solution. It is not a, it is one of many solutions. And it's important that we continue to look at 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 other matters.
I'll ask you to wrap up in a moment.
Okay.
Councillor Brown.
So with that, I'm I'm very supportive of of moving ahead with this with this project. And and being cognizant of the all the other aspects that are that may or could or may be impacted by this and that we that we really continue to pay attention to those.
Okay.
Okay.
Other councillors, any comments?
I'm just a time.
Councillor Cutler, any comments?
No, I I'm ready to have the question called.
Um, I won't repeat my last statements, but I will in the future be looking uh, to bring forward resolutions on on the execution and prioritizing our strategic work plan. Uh, I think this grant, we will take advantage of it, but we do need to prioritize our projects and our capital projects so that we can get as many of them over the finish line during this term. So with that, I'll call a question. All in favor?
Yes, I.
Yes.
Motion carried.
You've delayed it.
Delayed there. Okay.
Excellent.
Councillor Broton, I'm gonna move forward here. You you had a motion before, but.
Okay.
So I don't want to steamroll you, but.
Okay, let's move ahead. Um, okay, I'd like to propose a motion that whereas Canada is currently involved in a trade dispute with the United States, therefore, uh, can consistent with the provincial and federal Team Canada approach, I am requesting that staff be instructed to utilize non U S suppliers for all components of the universal water meter installation to ensure predictable cost and supply and also support current political challenges that we face. So I'll I'll cut off the motion at at universal water meter installation period.
Okay, uh, before we call a second or, uh, because Blackwell, you had your hand up.
Yeah, just for council's consideration, that could kill the project if we cannot source everything. So my suggestion is if you don't want to kill the project, you need to modify your resolution to say where possible is non U S equipment where possible. If you find staff are using non U S equipment, we may have no other choice.
Okay, I can accept.
You have.
On on that basis, yeah. On that basis, I would, uh, would you like to do a friendly amend amendment or do you want or or should I just change my motion?
Was going to raise the same point. But I wondered if we.
Okay, where possible. Okay, could I restate my emotion with where possible?
Okay.
Added in light of the possible.
Do we have a second for that motion?
I'll second that.
Okay, councillor Cutler seconded. Councillor Broton moved. Discussion. All in favor?
Could we just? Sorry, could we just read the motion one more time just for the gallery?
Okay.
Be clearly stating the whereas possible, where that sits in there.
Okay, whereas Canada is currently involved in a trade dispute with the United States, therefore, consistent with the provincial and federal Team Canada approach, staff be instructed to utilize non U U S, non U S suppliers wherever possible for all components of the universal water meter installation.
Thank you.
I would like to, before we call the question.
Yeah, councillor Abbott.
Okay, having listened to it again, I'm still not quite sure, quite comfortable with it. So, um, we know from the original bids that all the meters were all U S based companies. If I recall correctly, um, I don't know if he is a Canadian company. But if there's either Canadian company at ten times the cost, are we now binding ourselves to do something we can't afford? So, you know, I think we all, and this certainly this council, want to do the right thing by Canada. And we will not buy U S products, certainly tariff products unless we absolutely have to. But I'm concerned that we pigeon ourselves, pigeonhole ourselves into something that comes back to bite us here. As in, someone does make a medium that works, but it's ten times the price and we can't afford it. So I I I'm nervous about this resolution. I don't think it's necessary.
Just to jump in, we we met with Aiden this morning. There is Canadian companies that offer these things, but but fully understand what you're saying. And I think we're all in the spirit of buying Canadian where we can. But it sounds like there is options available, but you know, we may run into where there isn't. In which case, we do the best we can. Councillor Broton?
Yeah, well, um, my understanding is that the P R P R V valves and everything around them is is a Canadian company. The the identifiable pieces as as outlined in the document provided by us was that these are being provided by American companies. And I'm just confused as to why, whether there's Canadian providers. There's certainly other providers in the in the world who who may be able to 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 do this. And if we're looking at tariffs of twenty five, currently twenty five percent, perhaps more, uh, whether whether we cannot look at other options. So I just think it's, you know, it's really, really, uh, useful exercise to
Okay.
look at at all other options before we use American.
And your hand up.
I think you, you know, I can say from staff perspective, goes without saying, naturally, staff would be orienting uh, its procurement toward sort of a national policy. But I've also lived long enough to know you can't always compare apples to apples. You can have two suppliers, same price point, one's a piece of garbage, the other one's fantastic. I've known this firsthand with sewer grinder pumps. Some last six years, some last ten years, price points the same. So my recommendation is to not overly, I I get the intent of council on this, completely agree with it, don't get me wrong. But my request to councils don't unduly factor the ability of staff to procure the best option for the residents of the community, whatever that may be, just function quality, price point, point of origin, et cetera, all will get factored in. And there'll be a clear winner. If we start foreclosing on those opportunities, we may have to sacrifice, get a lesser quality this or that. I would not recommend doing that.
Okay, councillor Cutler, any comments?
I'm just wondering if the C A O might have any guidance as to how we could maybe tidy this motion up to reflect those concerns. I mean, it seems obvious to me that staff's going to make the best decision, you know, best bang for our buck. Um, we're not going to spend more money on a Canadian product that would be lesser even with a U S tar twenty five percent tariff in play. Is this something that we need to put in the motion or can we? I don't want to make assumptions about anything, but I would assume that staff is always going to make the best call. I don't know. Do you have any any additional advice or counsel here? Mister Blackwell?
Hi. Thank you through you to councillor Cutler. Um, this is about interpretation. So, uh, on council Brown's amended resolution, um, giving sort of priority to Canadian. Uh, what was the word you used? I forgot.
Knowing less.
Yeah, I know, uh, where possible.
Where possible.
Uh, I think if if council chooses to interpret it and interpret that along the lines I'm conveying, and we can all agree that that's what that means, and I think that's sufficient. If council was so minded though, to have something a bit more concrete, I'd need to think further on how to articulate a resolution.
Okay.
Good.
Yeah, councillor Abbott forward.
A direct question, do we need it? I don't think we do.
Yeah, Mister Blackwell.
You, um, no, as I said, you know, it's a priority for staff, obviously, to be, you know, finding the best solution. I would say normally that's where we can source it from, which is the best quality equipment for the lowest price. And whatever that third thing was, I can't remember now, lowest. Anyway, the best outcome for for the for the municipality and for the residents. Uh, you know, I could say that I could commit staff to doing this, and that is if we find something that's egregious relative to the tenure uh, that's been expressed by council, we can certainly bring to council for discussion and direction if 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 needed, but that said, the other sort of principle would remain in effect, where the source, the best product.
All right, councillor Brown, the motion stands or?
Motion stands, yes.
Okay, um, I'll call a question. Did we have a second or on that? Sorry.
Yes, I seconded.
Second councillor, all in favor?
I.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Councillor Cutler?
Uh, I'm for, I'll go for it, sure.
Okay, motion carries. Perfect. All right. Okay, thanks for that councillor Cutler. All right, uh, we will move to eight point two committees. Uh, and councillor Abbott?
Um, let me be really brief. That was purely added to give, um, people some history that we had discussed these a small meter issue of ICN C A C. I don't need to talk to it now, I'll just give you information.
Okay, enough. Uh, we'll move down to, and thank you to all my gallery. We'll move down to new business, annual work plan, sequencing, scheduling. I know we're tight for time. Uh, I will bring that back at another meeting, uh, for resolution on prioritizing the various programs. I think that's important. And of course, we've got uh, our the Tanny Creek, uh, which is in front of us now. So with that, I'll I'll move forward to twelve point two. Uh, and I'll ask, uh, Mister Blackwell for an update on the Tanny Creek.
Uh, thank you. I was not very much I'm able to say, uh, other than, uh, the state of local emergencies is still in place and, excuse me, will continue to stay in place for the foreseeable future. That's all I can sort of discuss at this point.
Okay, uh, I'll just add that we had a a very good conversation with the district of North Van, uh, who, as mentioned earlier, had experienced similar slide conditions. Uh, so there's now an open channel of communications between, uh, staff, councillors and mayor of that community and, uh, and we're appreciative to their contributions. Okay, uh, we'll move to public questions. Anyone in the gallery? Anyone online? Crystal? Oh, okay, uh, with that, uh, we'll move to item number fourteen, closure of meeting. Do you have a motion to move into the closed portion of the meeting? Subject to ninety point two B and and G, other litigation, potential litigation. Do we have a motion moving forward?
We've been cognizant of time. Jamie's only got ten minutes.
Will be quick.
Um, okay.
Is that a second councillor before we?
Yeah, this, um.
Okay.
There's a clause missing here for one of the discussions in close, sixteen point two is not covered by those two clauses. You need a clause about, um, personnel, whatever that one is.
Blackwell, thank you. You don't have to list all of the different topics in terms of the clauses. It's just, yeah, that which is the qualifying, it's good practice to list them all. It's not required as long as we are identifying a reason for. Yes, a viable reason.
Yeah, if we identify a reason for sixteen point two.
What I'm saying is you don't have to list them all.
Oh, I've never heard that before.
All right, we've got a mover and a second. All in favor?